I'd like to call the January 9th, 2014, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Judkins, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Here.
Mr. Pond.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
First order of business today are council minutes from the meetings of December 9th and December 12th, 2013, and special meetings of December 2nd and December 3rd, 2013. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve the meeting minutes for the December 9th and 12th, 2013, meetings, and the special meetings of December 2 and 3, 2013.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Lisa?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our next order of business in matters of special privilege, and today we have two. The first is excellence in service to Williamsburg, to be presented to utility technician John R. Stevens. This is a particularly rewarding and meaningful time for the city because this is a recognition by peers of someone who works with us. So, John, if you would, if you would meet me at the front, I would appreciate it. Congratulations, John. I have a something to read and then a plaque to present to you, and then we'll let you say something. This is "The City of Williamsburg Takes Pleasure in Recognizing John Stevens for Excellence in Service to Williamsburg." John Stevens has served the Williamsburg public for over seventeen years with exceptional dedication and effectiveness. As the city's utility technician, he is responsible for properly locating and marking the city's underground infrastructure, including water lines, sanitary sewer lines, storm sewer lines, and traffic signal wiring prior to any excavation. John is uniquely proficient in his trade, and his workmanship is sought out by others. In addition to locating utility lines, he works alongside his colleagues to solve problems on water and sewer line repairs. He is most noted for his ingenuity and innovative ability designing and making gadgets and tools to make difficult tasks easier and more efficient. Another example of his creativity is the poinsettia Christmas tree in the lobby of the municipal building, which he designed and built. John Stevens is a highly engaged and talented employee whose dedication to excellence is in keeping with the highest traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg. This is dated today, January 9th, 2014, and signed by me and city manager Jack Tuttle. John, congratulations. And if you'd like to say a few more.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Holman. City Council, thank you. This is something I know that you guys have to sweat over because there are a lot of people other than myself that are certainly deserving of this award. I appreciate your notification and observance of my performance for the city. I've spent the majority of my life here, growing up in the county, but still city of Williamsburg for me, and I like working here a lot. And it's, I've got a good crew of people that I work with. We're family, and I know better than eighty percent of the people in this room that I've come to know over the years, and I've really enjoyed it. And I just hope that I have a lot more time to continue to serve the citizenry and enjoy spending my life with you guys. I mean that from the heart.
Our next matter of special privilege is the 2013 Digital Cities Award presentation, and we have with us today Danielle Baumer from Accela Corporation. In November, the city was notified that we had placed ninth in the country for our population category of under seventy-five thousand for the Digital Cities Award. This award is given annually to deserving localities that effectively use technology to improve operations, increase transparency, and efficiencies, among others. Accela is a corporate sponsor of the award this year, and today we have Danielle Baumer with us here on behalf of Accela and the Center for Digital Government to present the award to the city. Danielle, if you would come to the podium. I'm going to come down here.
On behalf of the Center for Digital Communities and Digital Government, we'd like to congratulate you on your top ten ranking for the Digital Cities Survey winner for 2013. So, we've got a very brief presentation that kind of discusses some of the reasons the judge has selected you and to just make you aware as citizens of how well the city of Williamsburg is doing as far as providing a level of transparency and efficiency to the citizens of Williamsburg.
Terrific. Do you want to use the podium?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. So again, we're presenting the Digital Cities Survey Award for 2013, and of course, the city of Williamsburg is ranked in the top ten in the population category of less than seventy-five thousand. A little bit of background for the Center for Digital Government and ERepublic, they're actually, Center for Digital Government and Digital Communities is a research institute based out of Folsom, California, and they're an advisory institute on information technology policies that focus primarily on state and local government. So, some of the well-known publications that some of you in the room may have heard of are Government Technology and Public CIO. And this survey basically recognizes the success of the digital achievements of cities such as Williamsburg, and the goal that you all have in improving the life for your government employees as well as the citizens. So, move forward. I'll let you read a little bit about Accela, but as far as our involvement in this, we sponsor this simply because we share many of the goals of the Center for Digital Government and the Digital Communities as far as providing a level of transparency across all aspects of city government, and also just working across some of the IT initiatives. Again, I mentioned transparency, citizen engagement, policy and operations, and with us being a leader in civic engagement solutions, it's a natural fit for us to want to sponsor and to be involved in some of the awards that are presented this year. But, we want to focus on the city of Williamsburg and just focus on the reasons the judge found the city of Williamsburg to be very impressive in this under seventy-five thousand population category. The first is transparency, and they recognize the city's ability or efforts to conduct the business of government openly and responsibly, and they're among some of the most advanced of any in the cities involved in the 2013 Digital Cities Survey. So, one of the examples, while many cities stream and record video from city council meetings and make them available on website, you all have been recognized for not just doing that, but also taking the initiative one step further by making these videos available for meetings that involve the Planning Commission, the Housing and Redevelopment or Redevelopment and Housing Authority, the Economic Development Authority, and also other decision-making bodies. So, this type of effort establishes Williamsburg as a true pioneer in the open government movement and a model for other jurisdictions. Financial reporting, while many jurisdictions just give year-to-year budget information to citizens, Williamsburg provides this in a much more timely manner and also offers this once a month with updated reports that are organized clearly and efficiently on the city website. In addition, all payments to entities and organizations outside of the municipal sphere are collected, tabulated, and also made openly available for viewing by all citizens. They're consistent, updated, and accurate financial information that allow citizens to stay aware of the status of the taxpayer funds, and also this is something that builds trust between the city decision-makers and your constituents. And then lastly, the performance management dashboards. With an array of publicly available online performance dashboards, Williamsburg's commitment to openness and transparency also extends to cutting-edge, real-time data and business analytics. These applications collect performance data from the city departments in real time and allow citizens to compare selective performance indicators against the city council's established goals, initiatives, and outcomes, or GIOs. So, efforts like these coordinated across the city see Metro Williamsburg's status as a progressive digital city and a leader among similar jurisdictions throughout the nation. The competition is very fierce in this category, so making the top ten is a very significant achievement, and once again, we congratulate you on your selection.
Great.
Thank you.
Danielle, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for the award.
Thank you.
This is really an award to the city staff, particularly Mark Barham at IT and city manager Jack Tuttle, who led all of this, but I think this is a group effort in every way, and so congratulations to all of you for a good job. Our next order of business is public hearings, and today we have two. The first is microfiber network incorporation franchise, proposed ordinance 14-02.
City Attorney will give his report.
In 2011, city council granted James City County a license to install two conduits and fiber optic line to connect the county facilities with schools. When council did that, they granted that additional conduit but required that conduit to remain empty until cable associates who installed the conduit came to city council and requested a franchise to install fiber optic cable into that conduit. They have made that request, and so what council has in front of it today is the proposed franchise ordinance for that fiber optic cable to be run through that line. The terms of the franchise are substantially similar to the terms that city council granted to Verizon a couple of months ago. How they differ specifically is that Metro Fiber Networks, who is a subsidiary of Cable Associates, are required to install any equipment underground, so no overhead lines for this particular franchise. They've also agreed to install a conduit and fiber optic cable between this building and the library in order to provide connectivity between the library and this building, or the future Stryker Building when that is constructed, to allow data and information to be exchanged between the library administrative offices and the library itself. They've also agreed to give the city access to six lines of the fiber optic conduit that they, or cable that they install in the conduit if council grants this franchise. Gary Tarpley, who is the president of the corporation, is here, as well as Mike Bowler, who is a project manager. The city advertised this franchise for bids. Those were due on January the 3rd. No bids were received. City council needs to open a public hearing on this matter, and staff recommendation is that council adopt proposed ordinance 1402.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris before I open the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this issue to please come forward. Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
It seems like a win-win situation. The city gets greater connectivity anticipation of the Stryker Center construction and the connectivity to the library, and it seems like a positive step. May I ask Ms. Shelton just a question?
Yep.
All the documents necessary from Metro were received?
They were.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 14-02.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here today. The next public hearing are zoning ordinances, zoning ordinance amendments based on Virginia code changes. Chris, can we do this all as one hearing?
Yes.
Okay. This is PCR 13-039, amending conditional zoning regulations, proposed ordinance 14-05, PCR 13-040, amended site plan regulations to define final site plans, proposed ordinance 14-06, and PCR 13-041, correct zoning ordinance, cross-references to Virginia code, proposed ordinance 14-07. Mr. Nester.
I'll be very brief on this one. These make minor changes to our zoning ordinance based on recent changes to the city code. It is mandatory that we make these changes. We don't have a choice. These are all minor housekeeping changes dealing with cash proffers in case 039, what constitutes, defining what constitutes final site plan in case 040, and correcting a couple references in case 041. A planning commission held a public hearing on December 18 and recommended 70 that these changes be approved, and the ordinances that you mentioned would need to be approved to implement this recommendation.
Thank you, Reed. Any questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this issue to please come forward. Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. We don't, we don't have much choice.
We have a last question. Shelton, do we really have much choice?
No.
Okay.
I'll take a motion.
And do we, should we vote on these separately, or can we vote on them all together?
You can vote on them in one motion if you'd like. Just make sure you reference each of the cases.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt proposed ordinance 14-06 and 14-07.
And what about five?
Did I miss five and 14-05?
Okay, so the motion is to approve proposed ordinance 14-05, 14-06, and 14-07.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please? Lisa?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next order of business are reports, the first monthly financial statements. Jack?
Just point out that we're now six months through the fiscal year, and so this is the last major data point that we have as we're beginning to put together the budget for next year, and we're trying to understand both on the revenue side and expenditure side of what the trends have been. On the revenue side, we are, we're running a little more than half a million dollars ahead of where we were at the same time last year, entirely due to real estate property tax collections. Everything else kind of balances out, plus and minus it from where we were last year. So, the percent of revenue growth continues to be confined to that area and continues to be modest. Other than that, that's the only comment I wanted to make. Be happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Sarah.
We will discuss this in further detail and our retreat on Saturday as well.
Correct.
Any questions? Monthly department operating reports, anything in particular?
Nothing in particular to point out this month, no.
Do we have any feedback from the recent cold snap and sort of how citizens and how the city responded and how citizens?
Right. Other than, we've had a case of a couple of water line breaks due to freezing water lines and, but not a large number of those, but a couple of those. And in terms of city facilities, I'm not aware of any issues that we've had, so we've come through it pretty well.
Any questions? City manager reports, the schedule and process for the fiscal year 15 budget.
Yes, sir.
That's about a year.
Right. The budget calendar follows the pattern that we used last year with some significant changes over the year prior to that, and I would say the most, probably the most important change is that our first budget work session is actually before the proposed budget comes out, and the proposed budget is due to be delivered to city council and to the community on March 28. Then, public hearings again, and further work sessions will take place in April with looking for adoption in May. Again, if there are any questions on the calendar, everything's laid out here in terms of all the involvement, both of citizens, council, planning commission, city staff, as we go through this process once again.
Any questions about the timing of the process? Okay. City attorney reports, I think we have none.
None.
Okay. Brings us to our next agenda item, which is unfinished business, and this is PCR 13-033, sign regulation updates, proposed ordinances, 14-03 and 14-04. Mr. Nester.
You were provided with copies of the two proposed ordinances and a memo that outlines that these ordinances include all the changes that council agreed to at Monday's work session. The changes were shown at, in blue on the draft ordinance to make them easy to find. I won't go into explanations unless you have any questions of me on the changes.
Any questions for Mr. Nester involving our discussion on Monday, and I think all of the issues we discussed and changes we recommended are included here?
No questions. I think that there was good discussion over the last couple of months about all of these, and I think we've ended up in a good spot, and I think they're reflected in what we're seeing here.
And I will follow up on that. I think this was a good iteration in getting public input as well as between planning commission and the public, and then with us. I agree totally.
I think this is a good example of how the process is designed to work and how it can work effectively, where there are multiple opportunities or input from the public on matters that impact them directly. And we, the planning commission had the opportunity to take input, had discussion about that. We had the opportunity to take input, had discussion about that, did not make a decision at that time because we needed more time to consider what we had heard and the ramifications of what we were considering. Dealt with that at our last meeting, and I agree with Mr. Pond's. I think the, and the resulting conversation in the overall end result are really a positive step. So, I appreciate everybody's cooperation and work there, and particularly staff, who at each and every turn has the opportunity to explore a new way of wording of zoning.
I wanted to say the same thing. I thought the staff work was extraordinary on this. I really did.
Thanks. Reed, thank you. I'll take a motion.
Are we doing two?
Can we do this as one, or do we need?
Again, you can do it as one motion, as long as you make sure you reference each section, each ordinance in it.
Mr. Pond, why don't you make this?
I move that city council approve proposed ordinance number 13-3 and 14-4.
So, this is a motion of 1403 and 1404. Lisa, would you call the roll?
A second.
And a second. That's always helpful. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next order of business is new business. Anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That brings us to our final agenda item today, which is open forum, a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. I have one speaker's card, Mr. John Whitney.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I was reminded by a member of the audience to keep this short, so I show Bobby. Several months ago, when the film featuring Professor Robert Reich's work, Inequality for All, was announced for release, I approached Clay Riley, Mr. Clay Riley, program manager for the Kimball Theater, to see if the film could be included in future venues. Mr. Riley was very supportive and agreed to scheduling Inequality for All during the most open times. That happened to be in the late, in late January of 2014. Mr. Riley suggested having sponsors for the film to increase its exposure and appeal. I approached the local NAACP branch, Williamsburg Unitarian Universalist, and Altogether. I'm a member of the boards for the York James City, Williamsburg, NAACP branch and Altogether, and I serve as a member of the Social Justice Council for WUU. Each welcomed the opportunity to become sponsors and committed to help advertise the film and to solicit attendance. I call your attention to the poster, and this is coming to you in other means, to the post in which the film scheduled for, which is scheduled for the film, January 25th through January 30th is highlighted. Also featured are the colonial Williamsburg website and telephone number for ticket purchase. And you'll discover a delightful picture of Professor Reich, who, as you know, is an outspoken advocate and counsel on why and how economic inequality needs to be ended. I believe each of you shares his commitment. I hope you will join the Kimball Theater and the sponsors in supporting the film. Perhaps the media resources of our great city might feature the film through whatever way is best to communicate its importance and its being presented at the Kimball Theater. I extend a special invitation to you to attend the showing, best suited to your schedules. Thank you always. At this moment, I'm tempted to filibuster, but I'm going to return to my seat.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Anyone else wish to address council? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Shoney. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. Last month, I spoke once again here in open forum about the scandal of 110 Harrison Avenue. My presentation was not pleasant. As I spoke about the dishonor that you, Mr. Mayor, personally brought upon the city council, I'm sorry, upon the city and yourself, I stand by everything that I said. I spoke about how you have refused to directly address your role in the scandal, preferring instead to deflect legitimate concerns about your role. In a typical response, at the conclusion of my presentation, you sarcastically thanked me for being here once again, and you said my statements were inaccurate, but you must be better than this. You must be more specific to specific concerns. I don't bring concerns before council without researching available records. This would include watching proceedings on television, proceedings such as this, checking minutes from past meetings. In some cases, I've made requests for freedom of information, information. Honest, open government requires these records. You may recall, a few years ago, I presented some very legitimate concerns before the council regarding a lawsuit brought by two William &amp; Mary students versus the voter registrar at that time. Among other things, I questioned why the city spent $75,000 of taxpayer money for the legal defense of the registrar but spent none on the students. This is the time the council said they were neutral in the matter. It was a very legitimate concern that I had. The city at first denied making payments to the voter registrar's legal defense. Your response to my presentation was one of anger and bluster. You demanded of me that I apologize, blah, blah, blah. Fortunately, cooler has prevailed, and Mayor Zylter stepped forward, and she said she in fact had been in error. The payments had been made by the city to the defense. She was unaware of that, and at that point, we were able to continue the discussion. Such has not been the case with 110 Harrison Avenue. The law mandates that some records be kept. As you are well aware, minutes are required of meetings such as this, work sessions, retreats, other special meetings, et cetera. These minutes are approved by this council. The 110 Harrison Avenue fiasco raised red flags from the get-go. I have researched everything available to me. While researching council records, to my astonishment, there were no minutes for a March 4, 2006 city council retreat. This was held, this retreat was held just days before the council approval of the money to purchase that property. How is this possible? You know the law. Your city attorney knows the law. And some years later, and called your attention, you submitted an agenda from the city manager, which you took to be the, to satisfy the requirement of the minutes for that, for that special retreat, for that retreat. It was a poor substitute. In spite of the highly unusual circumstance of missing minutes, you offered the public no explanation whatsoever regarding why you failed to comply with that law, and you must certainly do not thank the diligent citizen who uncovered the suspiciously missing records, and that citizen, of course, was me. After I spoke here last month, Mr. Tuttle approached me with some After I spoke here last month, Mr. Tuttle approached me with some of his thoughts, and Mr. Tuttle, I want to say I appreciate you very much for making the effort, and I invite you to speak now of those thoughts and put them on the record. And as for you, Mayor, you had an opportunity from the get-go to get in front of this mess. You've had many opportunities since. It's not going away. You owe the public an explanation of your role in this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Anyone else wish to address council on any matter? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farrelly.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.